Just for the foundation.
Saying it's time to start.
Really, where's John?
We can't start yet, Dean, John's not here.
I'm going to call the meeting of the, a special meeting of the Salina City Heritage Commission to order Friday, September sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And our first thing on the agenda is a review of the minutes for the meeting twen- July twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Do I, are there any additions or corrections that you've noticed?
I would move to approve the minutes of July twenty-seventh.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the, the minutes for the twenty-seven, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen meeting. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, the, also, uh, review the minutes of the August twelfth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. Um, any additions or corrections?
And I would likewise move to approve the minutes of the August twelfth meeting.
I'll second that also.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, I guess, uh, we will, um, go proceed with the, our task is to review the application two A sixteen-two filed by Tony Dong requesting the approval of a certification of appropriateness to allow the demolition and removal of an exist- existing residential structure located at three sixteen West South Street. The property is subject to this application, is subject, is legally described as the west sixty-fifth five feet of the north ninety feet of Lot One on Ninth Street, Holland Edition. City of Salina designated this structure as a heritage conservation district property in nineteen ninety-seven due to its architectural significance. This is a continuation from the August twelfth, two thousand and sixteen Heritage Commission meeting. And... Do we need to start with a staff report here, John?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, board members. The Heritage Commission conducted an initial public hearing on Mr. Dong's application proposing to demolish the structure at three fifteen West South Street on August twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the Heritage Commission voted at that time based on, uh, the lack of a estimate to repair and reuse of the structure to table this application until the September sixteenth meeting. In order for the applicant to provide information for the project, uh, he was told to provide the, the following: a written cost estimate from a licensed billing contractor, preferably a foundation contractor, of the estimated cost to repair and replace the existing basement and foundation, and, uh, written costs from a licensed billing contractor, of the cost to do work necessary to return the remainder of the house to a habitable, single-family residence. And certainly, the economic hardship is on the current owner and is an important consideration in the Heritage Commission's deliberations. Uh, the Heritage Commission must determine, based on the documents and evidence submitted, whether repair and reuse is a feasible alternative to the demolition and removal of this particular structure. The Heritage Commission postponed a decision in this case so the applicant could furnish commission with the written cost estimates, and, uh, those would be done by, uh, both the foundation contractor and a billing contractor ideally, that would support the applicant's assertions that it's not financially or physically feasible to rehabilitate and reuse the existing residence and support the applicant's assertion that it's cost prohibitive to renovate the structure. Uh, staff also requested that the applicant provide commission with, uh, any additional information about his efforts to market or sell the property to a buyer willing to fix the home up to a habitable condition. Uh, Mr. Dong provided us, um, a, a cost estimate prior to the meeting for foundation work done by, uh, Charles Malby of Tescot, Kansas, and this focuses on the, the foundation repair solely. Uh, this was, uh, submitted just before the meeting today, so staff hasn't had the time to really do an analysis on this, but I think Mr. Dong could step through, uh, his process with Mr. Malby. Uh, and, uh, this focuses on the, uh, basement and foundation only. It, uh, would not, uh, address, um, the remainder of the frame structure on the property. Um, it's currently divided into two living units and is a, a duplex. So, um, there is some cause to, uh, restore it as a duplex where a single family is cer- maybe the single family is would be more preferable because of the size of the lot, it's a shared location, and, and this would be an ideal situation. We'll go ahead and, and present, um, Mr. Dong, and, uh, afterwards we'll give you the, the various, um, options you would have, and, and basically, um, you would be able to receive some information from Ron Michelson or a billing inspector with our billing services department about the hazardous condition of the home's foundation. And if, if so, if you think that is sufficient with, um, the, the estimate, then the commission could approve an issuance for a, a demolition permit. Or, you have a second option, the Heritage Mission, uh, failing to, uh, reach consensus on that could postpone consideration of Mr. Dong's application to allow the requested information to be provided to the commission. So, at, at this point, staff would be willing to answer questions on the, um, application itself. And, and certainly, we've described what's, uh, transgressed since our, our last meeting here, uh, so we're presenting, uh, this today to, as a, uh, an effort to provide Mr. Dong opportunity to, uh, demonstrate the house is, um, in a, a state that may not be recoverable. So, at this point, I, staff be glad answering questions the board, the commission may have.
My primary question is about the contractor. Is this guy licensed to do this kind of work?
Uh, that's something our, our billing inspector probably addressed. There are certain tiers of operators. Uh, in Mr. Malby's case, I believe he has an associate that may be, uh, working with him on that, but that, that hasn't made, been made clear to us. Uh, Mr. Malby's involvement to, to this point would be the demolition contractor in the event that demolition permit was approved for the property.
But it's his estimate that's been provided to us here today.
Yeah, yes, and, um, we can certainly, uh, let Mr. Dong, uh, uh, address the, uh, process we're going through here. Um, but barring the, uh, estimate you have before you, we have no other cost estimates or, uh, that is going to be not feasible to repair or reuse the structure. So, I think at this point, if you don't have questions with staff, uh, if Mr. Dong is here, could give us some, some background.
Yes, thank you.
Oh.
Yes, go ahead.
What am I supposed to say?
Well, air dish yourself.
Oh, I'm Tony Dong.
Sure, and then, uh, uh, you, you have provided an estimate, you might explain the process going through and why, why, uh, we...
I, yeah, I, I talked to two different contractors and, uh, Jim Howard was one, and he was, he promised he had my estimate by Monday, and evidently, he'd been talking with Chuck Malby, and Chuck, uh, got ahold of me today, gave me that estimate, and told me that, basically, the way that they're gonna have to repair that foundation, they can't use bigger excavators or something just because of the location and the size of the, uh, the spot they're working in, and, you know, a lot of it's gonna be done by hand, and that's why that, that estimate is so high. And he said, you know, just going, going off of that fifty thousand dollars or, uh, whatever, whatever that price is that he's got written down there, he said that it's, it's, uh, you know, gonna, obviously gonna be quite a bit more to do the inside of it also, and he said he, he would, he would put that estimate together if, if you guys wanted him to do that, or if you had questions, he, he said we could call him, but he wasn't able to make the meeting. And I also talked to another contractor, Kelly Dunn, and th- this is no fault of his, 'cause I didn't, I should've gave him a, a timeframe, but, uh, he was also gonna give me an estimate, but he has, I haven't received that one yet.
Okay, what, um, any questions for Mr. Dong or suggestions as to how we should proceed here?
It may be valuable also to have Mr. Michelson, uh, address the condition of the property. Uh, he's the one who did the initial inspection on it, who's helped the billing official, uh, go through the dangerous structure process with this, and, uh, he's present today and can give you some, uh, additional information on the, the billing condition, so... Yes, uh, Mr. Michelson, yeah.
I had a question for Ron Michaelson.
Ron Michelson, building inspector. Basically, what I'd like to do, or what I can do, is to go ahead and, and read some of the comments that, um, Mr. Brown and I put together when we did the building officials' request for condemnation, um, back in, um, back in April. Um, and I don't know if you have this information as part of your packet or not.
I believe so in the report, yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, you can, you can see then that, uh, a portion of the, of the foundation is a crawl space and a portion of it is a full-depth cellar. Um, are, there were a couple of, of circumstances which I'm sure you can read in your, uh, description there, is that, uh, the walls are multi-width brick, which means it's multi-width brick, uh, which is an older way of building a foundation. Some of the brick has fallen out, mortar's deteriorated, um, the west wall of the foundation has been bowed in probably three to five inches, so that would, that should be straightened out. The crawl space area, we could not tell what the condition of the footing was, if in fact there was a footing, and as you can see from some of the pictures, um, that, um, that brick is, is falling out and deteriorated. So, I'd be glad to entertain any other questions that you might have, but it's early self-explanatory.
Let me go back to the contractor. What can you tell us about Home Resort or Mr. Malby's license as a contractor?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what class of contractor, uh, Mr. Malby has. Um, and normally, it's a, normally the person that does this type of work or contractor is that specially-type contractor, like a foundation or a, a bricklayer or somebody like that, so, um, Mr. Malby, I'm not familiar with a lot of work that he's done with the foundation type of replacement, I could be mistaken, but, uh, it does not jog in my memory. Um, however, if he holds the proper licenses, nothing would prohibit, um, us from issuing a building permit for him to do the work, as long as he's properly licensed.
Or a subcontractor that he hires.
Right.
Or a subcontractor that he has to endure, same thing.
Yes.
Two, I've, um, I don't know, maybe a, a comment and a, and a question. Um, with regards to the rest of the structure, what is your opinion on the structural stability of the, of the house itself, of the, of the, of the building? I, I couldn't detect any sag or, or di- on a, on a, on a vis- on a visible inspection, but what's your professional opinion?
Well, the, the age of the house, it's, it's obviously settled and, 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 and moved over time. Um, whether that constitutes a, a danger, I'm not so sure. Um, however, the, uh, to restore it to full occupancy, there's going to be substantial work that would need to be done for it to meet the minimum housing code as far as doors and windows that fit and, uh, paint and crack repair and things like that, but, uh, the, the house has moved over time.
I didn't exactly hear all that, but you're saying, basically, the wood frame of the house appears to be okay, but, from what you're seeing, seeing?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, it's, like I say, it has settled over time, but that is, that's new to the age, I think, as much as it's new to a, an older house.
But once you stabilize the foundation, the rest of the house should be fine, uh, you know, structurally, yeah. Obviously, it needs a lot of cosmetic work.
Does this bid seem high? Are there work involved?
Well, I, I think he's, I had not had a chance to look at it closely, I was just given it just a few minutes ago, so I really couldn't say for certainty.
I, I, I had a question earlier, more of a comment. I'm a little bit concerned, we, we've been sitting, we, we sent this back, um, August twelfth, I believe, and we have one, only half a bid. We had requested full bids, and I, I understand the problems of working with contractors and trying to get them to, to, to do anything, and sometimes it's impossible to get people to come out and even look. I understand that completely, I've had that problem over the years, but I'm, I'm a little concerned if we, if, just on the notion of make, taking any action today, that we've only gotten part of what we asked for at the last meeting, and I just want to be on record with that.
I guess the question then becomes, how imminent is, is there a structural issue with this, this, this house? I mean, is it, kids getting into playing around, would they come down on them, or something of that nature?
I don't, I don't believe, it's difficult to say, obviously, especially on the record, it's difficult to say. Um, I would, I would think that it is not a immediate hazard, which means that it might not fall down today, but I could not say for sure if it's going to be stable for whatever length of time that, that you would, uh, think.
Has the property been fully secured? Because on August twelfth, when I drove by it, the do- front door was wide open and unlocked.
Front door was closed when I drove by there today.
Right, but I, I'd contacted staff on this, um, after, after I left this meeting last month, we, I drove by it and the front door was wide open, so that does create an attractive nuisance. Has that been fully secured?
From a staff standpoint, we have gone down and inspected the, the outside of the structure on several occasions. I have to admit, in the intervening four weeks, uh, we did notice that the front door was open on two occasions, and we shut that, and that's a result of having the, the wood jam, uh, of the door broken out and not fully closing, but, uh, as I, I checked, uh, it, uh, on Fri- uh, on, excuse me, on Thursday afternoon, uh, the door was, uh, shut and latched, so it is secure today.
I think that ask, it goes to your question of whether it's a s- a hazard to the community or kids getting into it.
Or anybody else.
Or anybody else, yes. Or anything else.
Sorry, I, I don't know where it didn't go from here.
I don't have any questions for Ron.
No, no, I don't think they can answer. I mean, it just gives me pause to think, 'cause we, we had the recordable earthquake at Gypson yesterday, or day before yesterday.
Really?
And...
It's still standing.
I know it's still standing, but the point is, this is a somewhat, uh, shakier issue than, than Gypson. As shaky as Gypson may or may not be, uh, so from, just from a plana- uh, for, uh, safety perspective, that's something we need to think about.
And in staff's dealing with older structures, uh, in previous years, uh, both in and outside the historic districts, generally, the mechanical and electrical systems are, are dated, often with the novantude wiring, as, as well as asbestos-laden heaters, things like that. Um, because of the age of the home and how the applicant has described it to us, uh, almost all the electrical wiring and plumbing would probably have to be, uh, taken out and replaced to restore this to any sort of utility, as well as any of the other amenities for, uh, cabinets and appliances. Um, at the conclusion of the meeting, I, I would like to give you your options, but certainly, um, we want you to review this because, uh, this may not be the last demolition review. Uh, it's, it certainly hasn't been the case before. Uh, as Salina structures age, uh, you will be making hard decisions on, on properties where, um, they may have been demolished by neglect, and, and that certainly goes on both inside and outside the historic district. So, um, at this point, I, uh, I'm not going to interrupt discussion, but I, I do want to give you the options today, and, uh, this is, uh, up on the screen. Um, basically, uh, uh, on number one, a written cost estimate is, is being provided today, um, though this, this hasn't been investigated by staff, uh, to replace the existing basement and foundation. Uh, we haven't received a cost estimate on any of the frame structure, which would be the remainder of the structure by the foundation, uh, or information about any efforts to, uh, market or sell the property to an owner who wishes to make those needed improvements. That is a, a third option. Uh, as far as your decision options today, and that's more at the bottom of the page, um, it is based on information received from Mr. Michelson about the hazardous condition of the home's foundation, the commi- should, could approve the issuance of a demolition permit if you believe you have sufficient evidence. Uh, as an alternate, the Heritage Mission could postpone consideration of Mr. Dong's application to allow the requested information such as, uh, additional estimates to be provided to the commission. And if, uh, that is your choice today, uh, then we should define a meeting date and, uh, set that, so those, uh, essentially would be your two options today, staff believes.
Our next regular meeting is what, ended October?
Uh, yes, it would be the, uh, fourth Wednesday in October.
Well, it seems like we have to either request more information and, and postpone till the next meeting, or consider these one and two under staff de- uh, recognizations on page ten. Do you see it that way or not?
Well, I, I don't, I'm looking at one and two, and I don't think those have been fully met, 'cause we're not, staff has not even assured us that this is a licensed building contractor in the city of Salina, so I don't know if I can, I can get behind, I mean, unless we struck those words from the...
Okay.
Otherwise, this is coming from, does anybody on, on this board know this company? You do? Okay, are they like...
I'm asking questions about it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Staff has, uh, oh, done an investigation while the meeting has been conducted and has verified that, uh, Mr. Malby is a, a billing contractor B, which would be a full billing contractor, I believe. Uh, is that assertion, uh, correct to, uh, the class B contractors? Okay, sure.
So, is, are you thinking of number four? Is that what you're looking at, or is that the same as this?
Yeah, pretty much.
I can't read that.
Sure.
My inclination would be to delay it till we have the information requested last month. Uh, once we have that, then we can make a decision, but until we have that, I think we're just firing blind.
Well, I don't, in my opinion, it really doesn't make any difference to us what the cost is. It's either a matter, you fix it or you don't fix it.
Right.
Um, unfortunately, it's a lot of money, but as I mentioned last time, I don't agree with the staff that says willful negligence acts by the owner or tenant leads to deterioration of the building structure. It was, to me, he made a willful and conscious decision not to spend any money maintaining this structure over the last several years since he's owned it, and unfortunately, because of his failure to do that, he's in the situation he's at at this moment, and, um, it's just, and then it gets dumped into our lap because he didn't do what he should've done all along, was maintain the structure, and unfortunately, it's gotten to the point, this point, where it's gonna cost a lot of money to fix it, plus, plus this amount to, to restore it back to a single-family home, it's probably gonna be about this much more, so, but, and I don't know why he bought the house, or why he didn't have much revenue from it, if he was, people were living there for free or next to free because he chose to do that. I mean, that was nice that he did that, but, uh, also reduced his money available to maintain the, for the building, so, I, like I say, I don't think we need to, as far as I'm concerned, we tell him to, Mr. Dong, just to, uh, get the structure up to, structural portions up to code, get the work done, and you can restore the bill, the house back the way it's supposed to, to be a single-family residence. That's my opinion.
And, and as though it's not the purview of this committee directly, I, I'm very concerned that this is an attractive nuisance, that staff has found the door unlocked or open at several different occasions, and that should be directed probably to the city to make sure that the building is secured so that that doesn't occur again. I mean, how hard is it to, to, to...
You just put a piece of plywood over and screw it.
Plywood or a couple of two-by-four?
Plywood it and screw it in place, that's how you do that.
Thank you, I know, but that hasn't been done, and it's obviously become an attractive nuisance, and that needs to be, the property needs to be secured and, and, and appropriately, uh, safeguarded so that the community is not at risk. That's not the purview of this committee, but I'd, I'd like that on the record somewhere.
Mr. Staff, would I call your attention again to the, of the options we have placed up there, and I can read those two options again. Um, and going over the information we have to date, uh, this is, uh, as well as input from Mr. Dong in, in conversation today, uh, prior to this meeting, uh, we believe these are probably the two options you should consider, and possibly not the ones contained in the staff report, because we do have some additional information. Uh, number one would be, um, based on the information received, uh, from the, the billing inspector about the hazardous condition of the home's foundation, and a, a cost estimate, the commission could approve the issuance of a, a demolition permit, or as an alternate, number two, the Heritage Mission could postpone consideration of Mr. Dong's application to allow the requested information such as a, uh, estimate on the, the frame structure as well to be provided to the commission, and you would have a, a meeting date coming up on October twenty-sixth of, uh, this coming month, uh, where, uh, you could pick that up again. Uh, we believe in two weeks we may not be as far along as, as you would prefer, we, we would, are probably looking maybe at the, the four-week period, uh, to give a, uh, adequate period for this, uh, the estimates to take place.
And what's the consensus, if we have one?
On the move, the Heritage Commission postponed consideration of Mr. Dong's application to allow more information, uh, especially on the interior of the house and walls and so forth, and to, uh, be provided at our next commission meeting, which would be the twenty...
Twenty-sixth of October.
Twenty-sixth of October, and we'll make a decision at that time.
Is there a second to that motion? It's been moved and seconded, as stated, that we postpone the, um, application, uh, requesting further information, and it's, this was brought to the October twenty-sixth regular meeting. Is there any further discussion?
And the one reason to say that I made that, uh, made that motion is that, looking at the size of that lot, if that house is torn down, in my opinion, I don't think anything's gonna be built there. It is so small that it, it's gonna be hard to build something on that lot for a single-family dwelling, because it is very, very small. So, personally, I'd like to see what it's gonna cost to do, but if it is cost prohibitive, I will be the first one to say it needs to be demolished also.
Any other comments?
Um, in, in that, as, if the work is done, did... Um, in, in that, if, if the work is done, did we, do we also ask for a, an estimate for a real estate appraisal of what it would, what it would potentially sell for in completion? Because...
I think that we got the figure like that last time.
The, uh, county appraisers valuation for the property, I believe, which was thirty-five thousand.
Right.
Uh, for taxable value. Uh, we could inquire on, on realtors, uh, though we haven't in the past, July will rely on the appraised value, um, because that, that's more of...
But assuming that the, the pro- uh, obviously if the property was, was restored to, um, not just livable condition, but, you know, almost making it a, it would almost be a brand new home at this point, what would that sell for in the city, in that location? What would that, what would that potentially appraise out at is the question that I have.
And that, that would probably be a more of a market decision than where the advice would come from a realtor.
Right, right, yeah. The, the other thing, I'm going to make a correction, I'm going to correct myself. Apparently, under seven, section seven D, this is under purview. It is, uh, under, this says failure to secure and board the building or structure if vacant. So it is under our, um, authority to make sure that that is, that that takes place.
Yes, and we'll be so advised.
And, Mr. Dong, did you wish to speak?
Uh, no, I, I don't, I have none.
We haven't had a second to the motion yet.
Yeah, we seconded. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know if I needed to stand back up or not.
Well, there's somebody from the public here.
Does anybody else want to make comment on this?
Sure they didn't. Okay, we have, um, no more discussion and we'll, um, those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Do I vote?
Yes.
Okay, and opposed, same sign, okay. Uh, motion is carried. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is number four, review of the proposed design for the proposed interpretive historic marker to honor August Bondi. Um, I think we've all, are all well aware of, um, the project. And, um, I, I don't know, I missed a meeting, so I'm not sure if this was, uh, presented at the meeting I missed or if this is a new, this, uh, written, what I assume will go on the plaque? Is that the, is that?
Yes, and we can summarize the, the actions until today. Uh, we have met, uh, previously on, uh, creating an interpretive marker for Mr. Bondi. Um, we've done that on two occasions, preliminary meeting in, in, uh, on January twenty-seventh and then also on April, uh, twenty-sixth, uh, as well as a meeting on, on July twenty-seventh where we looked at the, the plaque design. The, the previous meetings were to fine tune, uh, the location and, uh, the, uh, type of, uh, plaque that would be created. And, uh, since that time, uh, John Reynolds from the Heritage Mission and, uh, Susan Hawxworth with the Smokey Hill Museum have worked with, uh, Mr. Klinger, who, uh, approached us about placing the plaque, um, on a, uh, design for the, the plaque. And, and that is what we do have, uh, up in front of you today. We have that also as a handout at your table. Uh, this is showing a, a graphic of, of Mr. Bondi as a Civil War veteran. As, and, uh, from top to bottom, there are three Masonic emblems below that. Uh, the rest of the text, uh, for Mr. Bondi does, so it shows lifespan as well as, um, his, a summarize of his experience. Uh, so a Jewish abolitionist, a, also a Salina resident for forty-two years. Uh, the, the text of the body was created mostly by Mr. Klinger, but we did have a few typographical errors. We cleared up on that. Uh, certainly the, the, the date of Kansas, of Kansas State was needed to be on, on January twenty-ninth. That was corrected as well as some minor ones. Um, the, the second item was, uh, getting, uh, some additional emblems on the, the plaque itself to credit both the Jewish organization as well as the city of Salina. Uh, if we want to go to the next slide, Dustin, this just shows, uh, a blow up of what the image would be at the top of the structure. There are three, uh, Masonic emblems below that. And, uh, this is due to the fact that our Masonic Lodge in Salina is going to partially fund, fund the creation of its plaque. So they will be entering into a, a funding partnership with the Jewish American Society. And as part of that, they did want to recognize, uh, Mr. Bondi's involvement with the lodge, which was considerable. And we have summarized some of that in our, our staff report. Uh, on the, the next page, we, uh, just showed the Star of David, uh, the Masonic emblem, excuse me, the, uh, city's line of seal. And then on the next page, we do, we do have the, the various markers there. Uh, staff did some research on that and, uh, just for the benefit of, of those who don't have exposure for some of the imagery of masonry, which includes myself, uh, I, I'd ask Mr. Reynolds to, uh, advise us on that as, as well as some of the, um, consultation you've had with Mr. Klinger.
Certainly, um, Mr. Bondi was a, a charter member of the Salina Lodge, his number sixty, and served as the first secretary of the lodge for twenty-five, thirty years. Um, this is the only individual picture of a, of a member that hasn't served as master of the lodge that hangs in the lodge. Um, he, he, uh, the, the next year after they, they formed Lodge Sixty, they formed the York Rite Bodies, uh, which is a continuation lodges of, of masonry. And the first lodge there is called the, um, Royal Arch. And that's signified by the triple towel and the, and the triangle. Uh, after the, the Royal Arch, you get into two different lodges where one has to be an avowed Christian to, from, qualify for membership. As Mr. Bondi was Jewish, he did not qualify, so he only did the Royal Arch. Then, uh, in the eighteen nineties, he joined the Scottish Rite, uh, which I'm closely related to. And then he received a distinctive national honors in that in nineteen oh-one. Uh, he, he, these are just all, uh, basic, uh, emblems of the, of the fraternity. The, uh, compass and square is probably the most recognizable, uh, emblem of the lot. And that's the, this is the basic lodge indicating the working tools of a master mason. And then, and then the, these other, uh, symbols were adopted back in the day before a lot of people could read. So you learned everything by the symbols. And, and all of our lodges here have, are participating financially on the sign. And, and so they're putting our symbolism on there as well as the, the indication of the Thirty Second Green Mason on, in the, in the script. And Mr. Klinger and I have had several conversations. He's very amenable. He, he's, he's ready to do anything he, he can do to help out the city, the county. The lodges, anybody just get this sign, put up some, whatever we want, we'll get.
Well, thank you. Um, we're at a point where we're very close to, uh, the, the, uh, style of, of the marker itself as well as the text. And I did, I did want to just, uh, ad- advance, uh, another slide. Uh, this shows a, uh, what is called the Ohio Style Plaque. And because of the vertical nature of our, our emblem on, on the, uh, draft, this was suggested by Mr. Klinger as, as being the profile of, of the plaque to use. And we could step through the next two slides. Uh, these show the various arrangements on that. Uh, they, they both still have the framework on the bottom which supports the plaque. The only difference between this and the Georgia Style, which we originally looked at, was the eyebrow on top of the Georgia Style, which is this one here, is, is much more pronounced and would not lend itself to, uh, uh, that both the text and the graphics we're planning on that. So, um, this last one, uh, is, uh, shows the coloration that, that was, uh, approved at our, our January twenty, excuse me, our July twenty-seventh meeting, which is a cocoa brown with a, uh, a, a gold powder point for the text as well as the, the, the border on that. So though it doesn't show up well, that's a, a brown with a goldish text on that. Uh, so that gives you a flavor on what the final plaque would look like. And, uh, we have, uh, made a decision on the location for this at the Smokey Hill Museum. Uh, before you vote out, it's certainly like Ms. Hawxworth to come up and provide her input on the process and, and certainly, um, uh, fill in, uh, the background for the, um, way of recognizing these through the, the use of plaques, uh, very, in various parts of town. Um, looking on that, that we were planning on putting that on the, uh, planner on the north side of the museum, which would be on, on public property. Uh, there would probably be, uh, no need for an easement, uh, like, like we done it, which was done on, on private property. But it would require that, uh, since it's being mounted on public property, that this progress to the city commission, which would be, uh, the next step. That's, uh, while your packet was so thick today, this would be the same material that we would forward to the city commission with your recommendation, either proceed with this or what we're not. So at, at this point, uh, it might be appropriate to have Ms. Hawxworth, uh, uh, provide her input as well so we know, um, her assistance with that and, and any other, uh, facts she can give us.
Hello, Susan Hawxworth. Um, initially, the museum was contacted by Mr. Reynolds, uh, Klinger, sorry, looking at John, uh, about a plaque on August Bondi. And we thought, uh, that it was serious enough to, uh, pursue, um, and realize that it needed to go before, uh, go to John uh, for his input since it was, uh, going to involve, uh, heritage, uh, issues, uh, bring it for the court. Um, I'm not sure what all you need me to expound on. Uh, we have been, uh, working with Mr. Klinger, uh, on developing the, the plaque and various choices. And we are fully behind, uh, having it in front of the museum. We think it'll be a good fit. Um, it's close to the original, uh, one of the orig- one of the locations where he did work, um, at the federal building there, um, on the other corner of that block. Any other questions or about?
I don't know, I doubt if you can answer this, but in looking at these pictures, these are, this is a really low, it looks like it sits down low to the ground. I was visualizing it taller, but is that?
That I'm not, uh, as sure on. I think it'll be whatever we choose to install it at, um...
I, I mean, that just seems kind of low to me to read.
John, go.
Uh, yes, this, yeah, this is a, uh, what they call a proof. And this would be, uh, what the, the plaque would look like once it is, is ordered. Um, and, and this shows, yeah, the, the post or the height of that is generally adjustable. Um, if it was standing on, on the ground, it would be, uh, ninety-six, ninety-six inches tall, roughly eight feet. If you put it on a terrace, then it would be shortened approximately to keep that at a readable level. So, um, while it does say that, uh, the, the, the kick can, uh, be as tall as eight feet because of the terracing on the museum, it may step down a little bit.
Wouldn't it be too, wouldn't it be too tall for children to read?
No, we certainly want to engage you. There, there is a height that would be optimal for that.
Is it, the grass is flush with the sidewalk there, right?
No, there is a, it is a raised bed.
Well, yeah, it's just six inches, just a little curve.
It's not a large amount, but yeah.
Yeah, there's a picture. I knew we had one, I couldn't find it.
Get off the sidewalk. Uh, signs are on, on or near the sidewalk. They're usually not readable from the street. This would engage people, allow them to pause as well as see it from a distance. One of the important aspects of this, and, and we have given you some of the background, Mr. Klinger, is that, uh, this would be an important, uh, component of heritage tourism where multiple sites, uh, of, of this type are linked and, and generally traveled to as, as well. So I, we're... Would be to approve the design on that. And that would be the final component for us to go ahead and submit, uh, the Heritage Mission's recommendation to the city commission. So, um, that would be our options today is approve the draft text on the historic interpretive marker for, um, Mr. Bondi at the Smokey Hill Museum location. Um, you could, uh, subject, you do that subject to any conditions identified by a majority of the commission or, uh, in, in the, uh, the third case, take no action on the historic marker at this time. Um, those would be the three alternatives for you today. Basically, what you're doing is providing the city commission a recommendation on the placement and design for the, the plaque. Uh, at that point, we would... Place, and, uh, their approval is, is necessary because it'll be mounted on city property.
And then, and the style of the sign was Ohio?
Uh, yes, um, the, um, there is a slight, uh, difference in those. And we, we may want to go back to, um, oh, slide twenty-five. Um, uh, let's go ahead and start with twenty-six. Uh, on that...
I like that one.
Yes, um, uh, the Georgia has the, the higher eyebrow on that. And, uh, when we, uh, submitted, uh, a draft to Mr. Klinger in the last few days, uh, we, um, on his advice, thought that the, uh, vertical element with the photoplay and Masonic emblems, uh, would, would be better suited to having a, a lower eyebrow on that. Uh, while this is fairly dramatic, uh, his recommendation is because it, since we have a large vertical element at the top of the, the marker, that, uh, and we may back up to twenty-five on that, that this, uh, style, uh, the, the Ohio Style with a, a lower brow on that would probably be the better, uh, use. And, and this is a good example as well because it would allow the emblems both on the top as well as the bottom and provide a greater span for the text. The text was a critical part on that, that we didn't want to reduce it anyway.
I would move we approve the, the text of the, of the, uh, language on the proposed, uh, sign as well as the graphics on this Ohio Style marker.
I have a comment about the text. It's, they're minor, but I'd like to see Missouri after St. Louis and Kansas after Salina.
Yeah, I, and I have some, um, other, I, I've marked up this text to help with typos and other things, so. Inconsistencies, but I, I, I agree with you on that.
Well, we appreciate your, your input on that and, and we can make, uh, the adjustments. Uh, what we're looking at is, is, is the overall design first. And, uh, you can allow staff to, to clean up the minor elements, uh, on, on that and take responsibility to make sure that those are done.
Your, your, um, motion is the overall, the design and not necessarily the text.
Yeah, if they need to do, make some typographical changes, that's fine.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any more discussion? So we, so just to be clear, the text will be, will be addressed. Okay, uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, it's been moved and seconded, uh, and, uh, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Now, do, do, now we have to make a recommendation? Is that in the form of a motion or, or consensus or?
Oh, we just did, we just done that.
Okay, so that will be, that, okay.
What we did approve was a recommendation of the city commission. You, you couldn't, uh, approve the project going ahead without their permission as well. Uh, so that does, uh, consolidate that item. Staff be glad to carry up on the typographical errors on that. There'll be some slight adjustments. There may even be some suggestions at the city commission level on, on some of the text. So, uh, we, we... So, uh, we, we, though we don't expect that, uh, we, there is a possibility, but we'll be glad to, uh, take the responsibility to staff on that. Uh, the only remaining item today is we have been invited to a, um, Historic Preservation Commission's conference that is, uh, in Abilene this year. Presented by the Kansas Preservation Alliance. I've left some material off at, at your dais here and we did talk about that at your August meeting. Basically, they'll be meeting, uh, in, uh, Abilene on Wednesday and Thursday, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Uh, activities there begin at one o'clock on, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth with a, uh, a reception and, and a banquet and speaker. Who this year will be John Repkeema, uh, and, he will be, uh, speak, speaking at the, uh, keynote address following the, the banquet reception on, on Wednesday. There is a second day on that that does go from eight to four, uh, with other sessions on that. We, uh, have given you all the information we've received on that, it doesn't break down what the individual classes are like. But it's something for you to consider. If, if you want, you can go only for, uh, the, the banquet and, and the keynote address at that time. Uh, what we're looking at is just to get a, a rough head count. We do have the, uh, ability to get scholarships for some of, uh, your travel and, and registration over there. From the state preservation office as a CLG. They, they do support CLGs and provide scholarships, so that would offset your costs. You would not be out of pocket, we would try to have that paid ahead for you. But to do that, we would have to know, you know, which sessions you might plan to attend, since this is in the middle of week, I think it may exclude some of you, uh, possibly. But you could still consider the, the Wednesday banquet. So what we've done is, is given you a, a description on that on page three. It gives you the, the various choices of doing that as a, a full event, which is the, the one hundred dollar, the banquet only is thirty dollars. You would not have to go to all of the two days, you can go to some of the sessions or elements. We did wanna give you this option because it is fairly close in Abilene and this would be an excellent opportunity to meet our education requirement for certified local government. So, uh, what we'd like to do is, is just get a head count, if you could get with, uh, staff by Tuesday of next week, uh, we'd be glad to accommodate you. And this is certainly at your option if you don't have conflicts. So, that is what we've presented for you today. And conclude our, our items for business.
Pardon?
Uh, that would include, uh, conclude our items for business today.
Okay.
I have another matter.
Okay, go ahead.
I think the address is six forty-five South Santa Fe, I'm not sure. So one right next door north, the Maury Clinic. Is there anything we can do about that or the city can do about that to encourage them to fix that place?
Well, there is a-
Or we're gonna end up with another situation like Mr. Dong's house here for long.
Yeah, unfortunately, there is, um, uh, a, a not happy story with, uh, the, that particular property. The owner is, uh, Diane Twitty, who's, um, a widow. She's at advanced age now, gets around with the walker. She has enlisted contractors before to help her and paid them for the work. And, uh, there were some unscrupulous contractors who actually, uh, took, uh, the payment and several of her tools and didn't do the work. So she's had some setbacks there, but she's advancing in age and, and, uh, there is, uh, some concern that, uh, the only person who could conceivably purchase the property would be Maury Clinic, who would use that for parking. So, unfortunately, these circumstances do occur. What we provided to Ms. Twitty was, uh, uh, several grants for our home improvement loans that we have through our development services at different times in the past. But some of the needs that she had, uh, were too much for that particular fund, so that didn't go forward. But staff has been involved with her and, and we periodically visit with her on her plans. So, we, we are, um, watching that because, uh, a lot of the elderly, uh, choose to stay in their homes as long as they can. And, and this lack of investment generally requires it, you know, causes them to lose their equity and, and ultimately the structure as well. So, yeah, that's an important effort is to watch demolition by neglect and provide alternatives on that. We've explored that in the past and will continue to explore the ways to lessen that impact, not only in the historic district, but throughout town. We adopted a property maintenance code, uh, two years ago, which allows us to go in site property owners on unsafe structures, uh, or derelict structures, structures needing maintenance. So we do employ that system and, uh, will continue to, to do that as well.
I think it's six forty-five.
It is a, a six-story structure, it was owned by Mason Sampson, who, who was one of the owners of the Slone Evening Journal, uh, there.
It's, it's just right next door north of the clinic there.
Yeah, I think I know what you mean. Okay, any other issues or comments? You have nothing more, John?
Uh, that concludes, uh, what staff has brought to you today. That, that concludes our, our business today.
So, uh, I declare this meeting adjourned.